Thank you, Madam President. Annually, the Indiana Code requires that we have a Board of Finance meeting in January, and we're going to do that here first thing tonight. And at that time, one of the informational pieces or points of action would be election of officers by the current Board of Education. Typically, we would see that being a mirror of what the Board of Education officers are. So Ms. Mustin, you as President, and Ms. Puckett as Secretary. Another point of action would be to appoint an investment officer for the organization, and that would be typically recommended as our current CFO or Treasurer, myself, Matt Miles. So at this time, as a first item of action, I would recommend that the Board proceed with those officers and the investment officer. I do have some reports I'd like to share.
Please do.
If that pleases Ms. Mustin.
Please do.
The second part of this requirement of the Code is that we present on our investments from the past year, and those should be included and on the screens at this time. You'll see annual interest from 2022 was $279,000. A little, we've seen an increase over the last year, which is great, and our interest has moved overall into the general fund as opposed to the bonds and other funds, which has been a trend over the last several years. So we're continuing that trend in all very favorable. Next, we would go to our financial indicators from DOAB, and these are all public information that we share with the Board at this time as part of our requirements. So we can go ahead and go to the next slide. The first slide is our ADM. And as we've reviewed this in the past, our ADM is trending positively with an upward trend over the last couple of years. Then we get this beautiful report of fund balances, which includes all funds, and it is very complicated, as you can see. So we're going to break this down a little bit more on the next slide. That's kind of a snapshot of our funds. These being our big funds, the education fund, which replaced the general fund, which is why you see the change in colors from green to orange there from 2018 to 2019, as well as our operational funds, again with an increasing balance, which would mirror the increase of expenses that we've had as well. So good trend. This is a quick look at our annual expenses versus revenue, and you can see in 2021, which is the most recent year we have data from to share, our revenue exceeded expenses, which is what we want to see. Again, another positive trend here, our fund balance versus a percentage of operational expenses. So as our expenses are going up, our balances are following, and also a positive trend. Next chart you see is our revenue and where our revenues come from. So a breakdown of that, again, you can also see the variance year to year as we've changed going back to, you know, 2014 to start the graph and trending upward over the last few years. And this exciting graph here at the end is a good thing because it just reflects that we have no operational referendum. We don't spend any, we don't have an operating referendum fund. So very positive data point. And that's what we have to share tonight.
Well, thank you for the excellent fiscal management of our district. I don't have any particular questions. Do any of you have any questions?
I just have one. Thank you, Mr. Miles. On the slide, revenue by type, just to make sure I'm understanding it correctly, the blue shows that the biggest chunk of our revenue comes from the state. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you. Yes.
Well, if there are no further questions or comments, we can close our Board of Finance meeting. Is there a motion to adjourn? Don't need, okay. We're closed. All right. That's my first Board of Finance meeting. Done. Yeah, that's right. So we'll call our regularly scheduled school board meeting to order. Would you all stand with me, and we'll repeat the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Now, this is my favorite part of every meeting. We have our superintendent's award, and we have a lot of performing artists to recognize tonight. So the Board will meet in front, and we will recognize our artists.
Madam President, Dr. Smith and members of the Board, we present our superintendent's award by the Assistant Superintendent of Secondary Education, Mr. Kuznick.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Madam President, Dr. Smith, members of the Board, pleased to bring you tonight several students with outstanding performance, no pun intended, by our performing arts students at the secondary level. We're going to start off first with Falk Creek Valley, recognizing several students for all-region orchestra, all-region honor band, and Indiana Middle School Honor Choir. Here on behalf of Falk Creek Valley this evening is Ms. Shannon Jones.
First, we have Alisa Ampel for Middle School Honor Choir in soprano. Alisa Ampel also got all-region honor orchestra for viola. Next, we have Ava Berkey, Middle School Honor Choir for alto. Haley Dean, all-region honor orchestra on violin. Andrea Delgado, all-region honor orchestra on viola. Noah Gaither, Middle School Honor Choir on bass. Brooklyn Henderson, Middle School Honor Choir alto. Maxwell Johnson, Middle School Honor Choir alto. Bennett Lawrence, all-region honor band trumpet. Lucy Phelps-Kelleher, all-region honor band flute. Sage Phelps-Kelleher, all-region honor band oboe. Abram Sheets, all-region honor band trombone. And Madeline Williams, all-region honor orchestra cello.
Call the microphone, DeShamar Marshall.
Okay, all three students are actually freshmen. So Bailey Workman on bassoon was, I believe, third chair, junior all-state. Oliver Hyman, also a, well, I already said they're all freshmen, but on French horn as well. And Mr. Abe Greenfield on trumpet.
Call the microphone, DeShamar Marshall.
Okay, all three students are actually freshmen. So Bailey Workman on bassoon was, I believe, third chair, junior all-state. Oliver Hyman, also a, well, I already said they're all freshmen, but on French horn as well. And Mr. Abe Greenfield on trumpet.
And I see I don't have to announce it, but I've taken the helm from Ms. Mustin.
Any parents or community members who've come for the awards, you're welcome to stay for our wonderful board meeting, but if not, now is a great time for you if you'd like to leave. Thank you.
That was wonderful. So proud of our kiddos. The next item on the agenda is our blue ribbon update. Mr. Smith.
Madam President, members of the Board, Dr. Smith, as soon as we get that up there. Construction has been progressing. We've had some good weather with some rain, but warmth of the weather has helped us on the outside work. Site work continues on the west side of LC, new entry, and that's a new entrance going in from the outside, and also the new media center and the family and consumer science labs, as well as art labs. LC pool continues on with foundation work, and hopefully into February, the north walls will start to be set there at LC. LN continues. We're pushing hard for February 13th, the week of the move, and we continue to make progress. New three-story, again, this is first floor, so a lot of progress there as we continue A new family consumer science areas, actually, there's two rooms there, will also be turned over at the same time. Pool continues on. The floor of the pool is in, and they'll continue to do the deckwork, and hopefully here in the next month or so, before spring breaks, we'll button up the outside wall. I believe that's it. And we do, this week, we have interviews for the LACC building for the architect, and in 1st of February, we'll be moving forward with the CMC for that project as well.
Questions? I do have a question. I know that our teachers, some of whom have been teaching with us for 35 years, and if I'm thinking correctly, may have a few things in their rooms. And I see I don't have to announce it, but I've taken the helm from Ms. Mustin. Any parents or community members who've come for the awards, you're welcome to stay for our wonderful board meeting, but if not, now is a great time for you if you'd like to leave. Thank you. That was wonderful. So proud of our kiddos. The next item on the agenda is our blue ribbon update. Mr. Smith.
Madam President, members of the Board, Dr. Smith, as soon as we get that up there. Construction has been progressing. We've had some good weather with some rain, but warmth of the weather has helped us on the outside work. Site work continues on the west side of LC, new entry, and that's a new entrance going in from the outside, and also the new media center and the family and consumer science labs, as well as art labs. LC pool continues on with foundation work, and hopefully into February, the north walls will start to be set there at LC. LN continues. We're pushing hard for February 13th, the week of the move, and we continue to make progress. New three-story, again, this is first floor, so a lot of progress there as we continue A new family consumer science areas, actually, there's two rooms there, will also be turned over at the same time. Pool continues on. The floor of the pool is in, and they'll continue to do the deckwork, and hopefully here in the next month or so, before spring breaks, we'll button up the outside wall. I believe that's it. And we do, this week, we have interviews for the LACC building for the architect, and in 1st of February, we'll be moving forward with the CMC for that project as well.
Questions? I do have a question. I know that our teachers, some of whom have been teaching with us for 35 years, and if I'm thinking correctly, may have a few things in their rooms. What are we, how are we managing that? How are we helping our teachers with the move? We don't have a two-week time period to move. It's not, it's not over a long holiday. It's a three-day weekend. So how are we helping our teachers with that move?
We started last fall, and we have provided all the boxes, tape, markers, stick 'em notes, whatever, for the teachers to pack their belongings of their room. We are bringing in commercial movers that will transport all of that to the new facility. One good thing, we don't have to transport a lot of the furniture because they have all-new furniture.
Fabulous. Thank you so much. I'm glad we're not putting that on the backs of our custodial staff.
We take care of them.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that. Good. Well, then, we can move on to 4.2, which is the resolution preliminarily approving the lease for a public hearing and approving the issuance of bonds and related matters, and that would be you, Mr. Miles.
Thank you, Madam President. Dr. Smith, members of the Board, as stated, tonight, we've got a resolution for preliminary approval of a lease for public hearing and approving the issuance of bonds. And with us tonight to explain that a little more and how that relates to our upcoming projects is Hannah Clendenning, who's at the podium now from Barnes &amp; Thornburg. So Hannah.
Good evening. As Matt said, we're from Barnes &amp; Thornburg. So tonight, this is pretty straightforward. We're just presenting through your approval a resolution regarding a proposed lease between the school corporation and the building corporation of the existing Belzer Middle School and Falk Creek Valley Middle School, and then to approve the issuance of the bonds by the building corporation for the 2023-2024 middle school facilities renovation expansion update, the LACC transformation, and new education community center project. So I'm sure you've done many of these building corporation deals and lease deals and first mortgage bond financing. This is very, very similar, if not nearly identical, to many of those you've done before, including the high school project that we did just last year. Most recently, I believe, the most previous, or the most recent previous step was in November, the Board approved the preliminary determination resolution defining the project. So now, this is just the next procedural step, approving just the form of the lease so it won't be finalized and executed until a public hearing is occurred. So it's just that form, and then authorizes the issuance of bonds. If that goes through tonight, the next step would then be to advertise and withhold the public hearing late February, I believe, the 27th, the initial preparation of the lease, which would put us on track to then sell the bonds sometime in March. And then, just as far as the bonds themselves go, the resolution here and the lease itself authorizes a maximum aggregate principal amount of $130 million to be issued in the quarter of next year and over a term of maximum of years.
Thank you, Ms. Clendenning. At this time, it's informational item, and then later this evening, we will be coming bring this back to you for a vote.
Thank you very much. And I do believe we have a community member, my friend JD Mazur, who would like to speak to this. We have a three-minute period.
Mr. Mazur, to make sure we do this correctly, Ms. Blankenship, can you guide him? Because we know you personally, but we want to make sure we do it for the record correctly. Sheila, will you give him direction?
Yes, that you state your name and your address, and then as soon as that's completed, I'll start the timer. You have three minutes to speak.
And I guess my concern isn't exactly what the counsel from Barnes &amp; Thornburg was talking about, but over the weekend, I read in Geist magazine that, for some reason, the Board was considering a joint construction project for some administration building with the city that was to be financed through the referendum that was passed a few years ago. And I was surprised by that. I don't know if the mayor was speaking out of school, so to speak, or quoted improperly, but there's a lot of bickerfesting that goes on in Lawrence city politics between the Republicans and Democrats that you can probably read about on occasion from time to time in the city, which has some negative attributes to it, and I'm just wanting to express a degree of concern that the Board would enmesh itself in city politics in a way that might not benefit the schools as a whole. So that's all I had to say.
I appreciate that very much. Thank you for your concern, and we will, we will have a discussion before our vote.
Thank you.
That brings us to information item 4.3, the transfer of funds update. Mr. Miles.
Thank you, Madam President. Dr. Smith, members of the Board, our next informational item tonight is a transfer of funds at this time between, it's a report back from what you approved for our December transfers for our year-end. At that time, we did not know what those amounts would be, and we said we would report back. And so at this time, this is basically a reporting back of what those year-end transfers looked like and the amounts that they came out to be. Statutorily, we have to follow per state board of accounts, having certain funds pay for certain expenses, and then we reimburse at the end of the year so that we can get those, those funds back to whole. It also allows us to compare to historical funds that have changed over the years. So the report back is in front of you, and again, those took place year-end, and I just want to present them as an informational item tonight.
Questions? No questions? We'll move on to permission to transfer funds to the rainy day fund.
Thank you, Madam President. Dr. Smith, members of the Board, the next item for us to review as an informational item, I will bring this back to you again later this evening for a vote, but this is a transfer of funds to our rainy day fund, which is a very positive thing for us to be able to do. We, upon calculating our finances at the end of the year, are recommending a $1.5 million transfer into the rainy day fund, which will just, they're great, even greater improve our financial standing and our financial portfolio at the end of the year. So at this time, it's an informational item. I welcome any questions or comments.
I just want to make sure that our transfer of rainy day funds will not impact in any way whatsoever our stipends to our teachers.
Yes, thank you for bringing that up. It will not. In short, we are set for that stipend to be paid out in February.
Thank you.
Mad, as Board members, they don't, they usually ask this, so I'll ask it for them. What is our balance in our rainy day fund, and why is it prudent for us to have a rainy day fund, sir?
The importance, I'll speak to that first. The importance of the rainy day fund is to, when, when we go out to borrow money for bonds and other things, it improves our ability to borrow money at a better rate. It gives us also that, that piggy bank fund that if something does happen, that we're able to turn to it. And currently, we are around $15 million in that fund. Yes, I'm sorry, about 11 in that fund. Then that would, again, this, this is the same transfer that we made last year at this time as well. So we have been able to grow that over the last few years, especially the last five years.
And that percentage of our, of our operating funds is roughly?
We're, total, total spending as a district annually through all funds is about $250 million, $258 million.
Okay. All right.
Can I please add also, since we have mentioned the teacher stipend, I would wonder, well, where does that one come from? So for the record, could you please let us know where the teacher stipend comes from?
Sure, that's coming out of our education fund.
Thank you, sir.
And that fund is one that we try to keep at about one month's worth of payroll so that if we do come into any issues with payment from the state, there's any delay for any reason, we're able to make payroll.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Mr. Miles, can you also remind us all what our bond rating is here in Lawrence Township?
Thank you for that question. It's a double A-plus rating.
Yes. I just want to comment that I know how very difficult in these times when the complexity index is really not working towards our urban schools, that a district like Lawrence Township is able to make such a move, and just want to applaud the superintendent as well as his cabinet for the amazing work that you're doing to ensure that we're able to be so financially sound.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. Miles, again, our one-day loan retirement fund bond.
Thank you, Madam President. Once again, Dr. Smith, members of the Board, our next point of order is an inter, inter-fund loan that must take place at the end of the school, or end of the calendar year, excuse me, to make sure we don't have any negative balances. This is a $1,600, I'm sorry, $1,800 transfer that we make to cover the pension, pension bond fund so that that doesn't run into the negative, and that's required by state code. And we do that as a one-day transfer of a loan, December 31st, and then pay it back right the next day on January 1st. So this is an informational item, and again, will be brought back for approval later.
I have to be honest, that doesn't make any sense to me, but I, I know, I know we do it. We have to do it by statute, so.
Absolutely.
Good for us. Thank you for keeping us. I would never catch that one. Let's move it here and move it back again. Okay, thank you very much. The resolution to approve transfer of funds to sick day, sick day buyout fund.
Madam President, thank you. Madam President, thank you, Dr. Smith, once again, members of the board. This is another year-end transfer that we will make or asking for approval later this evening. This is to fund our sick day increase on the buyout when an employee retires at the end of their career. This was approved as part of the collective bargaining agreement earlier last fall, and again, approved by the board. This step would actually fund it, so those dollars are there and ready to go when needed. And again, this is an informational item at this time, and we'll ask for approval later tonight.
Great. And on to Mr. Miles with the financial update. You're going to need a cane and a hat.
Thank you, Madam President, Dr. Smith, members of the board. We've had a lot of financial reporting, and we're seeing the end here, but the next two reports are our end of November and end of December 2022 reports, both of our general fund and our transportation fund. You may recall, in December, we met early in the month and therefore did not have the November reports prepared at that time, just due to the timing of the calendar when the board report fell. So you're seeing both month end at this time, and as we like to do, the green checkmarks are always something that we see is very positive, and the red is just something we're always going to look at and just make sure everything's okay, and everything is very favorable on both month end, but I would welcome any comments or questions.
Mr. Miles, for the board, there was a part of the collective bargaining agreement that we approved that would give our staff additional money if our cash balance was at a certain level. So Ms. Blankenship, if you go back to December for the board to remind them that if our cash balance was at $15 million, and as it reads now, it's at $17 million, that the staff would receive additional dollars. Is that correct, Mr. Miles?
That is correct, both classified and certified staff.
Okay, so we just want to put that on the record so that our staff, which we're going to send a communication, don't worry about that, but we want the public to know that we met those standards.
And that it's from that fund we transfer into the rainy day, but we don't transfer into the rainy day any funds that could possibly be used for our stipends.
Absolutely.
Thank you. We are now at our board committee chair report.
Sorry, I had a quick comment.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Thank you for presenting this. You've had a very busy night at the Dayos, Mr. Miles. When we're out talking to our communities, for the non-financial people, myself somewhat included, all right, I'm proud of our district because all of this shows what a good financial outlook and situation our district is in. What would you say to the public when you're just out talking? I mean, what are the best indicators to really relate to people? Obviously, we have a cash balance. We're not in an operational referendum. Are there any other numbers or anything you feel like we should highlight when we are talking to our neighbors?
Absolutely. Thank you for the question, Ms. Norman. You touched on a couple of them that I would -- that would come to mind, top of mind. The last chart that we saw earlier with the DOAB indicators, that there's zero operating referendum, that's huge. It shows that, you know, we're not going out to our taxpayers to ask for additional funds to pay operating expenses. The fact that, you know, you can say we have a growing cash balance in our rainy day fund and our education fund, we've been able to do extra financial incentives to all staff, such as the stipends that Dr. Smith just mentioned, and really our bond rating. They may not know what that is, but you might relate it to someone's mortgage. If they get a -- if they've got a great, strong bank account, they may get a better interest rate on their mortgage and less expenses for them. We're very much the same way.
Board, I think there's another one major that we've got to remember, and that is our revenue streams, and that we don't get to dictate the amount of money that comes into our coffers. Our number-one revenue stream, as Matt pointed out early, is state revenue. So for our patrons that are out there, it's very important to understand that we operate based on our enrollment and based on what our legislators are able to give us. So we must pay close attention to what happens downtown on Capitol Street, okay? It's imperative that they understand that we receive money based on a per pupil expenditure, and that if that is lowered or dropped, it will impact our overall budget. We also are impacted because the money follows the kids. So if we lose students, we lose revenue. If we gain students, we gain revenue. It's really that simple. So it's really important, imperative, for our local taxpayers to understand the importance of their local revenue. What Matt is reporting for the Board of Education to the community is our monthly financial statement, and so it's important for the public to know that we are financially stable, we're not in deficit spending, nor are we financially broke. And that's important to understand, because if for some reason the state of Indiana is unable to grant us money for the month, we get money every month from the state, then the cash balance you see here is what we're going to use to pay our staff members and keep our operations going. That's simple. Does that make sense, folks? And we want to make sure that we're in a position where we're able to pay our people where we wouldn't have to go out and borrow money initially, but we could make it. And the rainy day fund is also on there also, okay?
Great. Any more questions for Mr. Miles? There's a lot of information. Okay. We will move on to our board committee chair reports. Now, we have just switched committees, so I'm not sure. Ms. Norman, are you ready to give the report for the foundation?
I am, Madam President, and if any of you ladies would also like to add anything I missed seeing as a rookie. But yeah, so the foundation, the biggest event was the robotics. They were -- the foundation was at the elementary robotics championships. They're present, thankful for their support. The next two big events is Night with the Stars next Friday night. You can go on MSDLTF.org to register and for details, and then also the gala that is coming up, March 10th.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Norman, if I could add, as someone who's been a member of the foundation board for many years, this is our 40th anniversary year, supporting our students here in Lawrence Township, and the gala is a really great time, so I highly encourage everyone to register and help celebrate the great work we do here in Lawrence Township.
Outstanding. I'm Lawrence Parks in recreation. Ms. Pocket?
Be me, and I know you all were waiting to follow up, as Amy used to always tell us, about the pickle boards. Yes, they are almost completed. Got to start off with that. They are almost completed, and they are waiting on warmer weather for the top court. Go pickle boards. I still need to figure out how to even play that, you guys, so if anybody's down to teach me. Okay, butterfly and pollinator gardens are moving along. Amy, correct me if I'm wrong, and make sure that I'm saying this right. First year, you sleep, that means that the plants grow deep roots. Second year, they peep, meaning they start to flourish. Third year, they leap, meaning they are coming along and blooming. And so we are in the creep stage, and so there is a ribbon cutting in April. So that is the parks. Amy, am I missing something?
No. Did she do well, Ms. Mazur?
Did I do well? I tried. All right, well, that's it.
We remind, that's not our lane. That's the parks. Where's that going to be located?
Yes, I don't have the exact address.
Liz, where's that going to be located?
Do you need the exact address?
Which park? Okay, all right. It will be located in one of the Lawrence parks. We're going to put that on the record.
Yep.
You can look up City of Lawrence and go onto their parks and look that up, and because that might just be a lovely day in April and a fun way to spend that.
Yeah, because there are four parks here, yeah.
Krista, I really appreciate how you moved the movement.
I'm very animated, can you tell? I'm animated, I'm animated. All right, that's all I have.
Fabulous. Ms. Dunn, do we have any policy committee information?
I am going to defer to my co-chair.
I don't know if it's going to be as exciting.
If you could make it real animated for us, I'd really appreciate it.
I was elementary, so I definitely could try.
If it could include bees and butterflies.
I'm sure there's policy for that somewhere, yes. I can dig that up.
We do.
No, I would say that we're excited that we've moved through one of the biggest packages and policy packages in December. Did publish that just a couple weeks ago, and so we're just working back through the administrative guidelines. Sometimes those change a bit with the revisions, so we'll clean those up over the next month or so, and I think we're going to do some training, Ms. Dunn. Very exciting. I'll tell you what.
I'm just waiting to get into that policy.
Dr. Harshbarger, so that the public will know, there's something magical happening downtown on Capitol Street. That's our Indiana General Assembly, so as they do their work, we just sit back patiently, and of course, that will impact our policy. So we could expect for plenty of policies to take place during the month of May after the Indiana General Assembly does their dance in April. Is that correct?
That's correct, and with the long session, we won't see probably the revisions until May.
Right, so, coming soon.
Dr. Smith, I don't like to disagree with you very often, or almost ever, but I don't think we'll be sitting back patiently while they do their work. Maybe on --
Oh, I --
The policy committee will, but I don't think your board will be --
President, you can speak your mind related to the general assembly. You know, I'm very nice to them, but you, as an elected official, you could say what you want to, ma'am. All right.
We do meet with our legislators, and we do advocate for our children. Okay. Anything else?
No, just thank you. I appreciate your willingness to work with me, and I'm excited about tomorrow. And we also talked about the fact that, you know, obviously, all of these policies will go into effect July 1st, and so we know that while we might not have a lot of updates right now, that we will have many for some days. At least, we hope that there will be many positive ones right starting today.
I hope so. Fabulous. Board committees being reported, we'll move on to our action items. Action item 5.1, the approval of resolution of preliminarily approving the lease, et cetera. Mr. Miles?
Thank you, Madam President, Dr. Smith, members of the board. Once again, we bring back to you the, at this time for an action item, the approval of the resolution of preliminary approval of the lease for a public hearing and approving the issuance of bonds and related matters. Again, Ms. Clendenning is here, if you have any items that she needs to address. Otherwise, I would recommend that the board pass this as presented.
I do have a question. I do have a question. Dr. Smith, we have discussed wanting to maintain our independence as a school corporation. So how is that lease working with the city? Can you go into that for us a little bit?
Well, that's a good question. One of our patrons, Mr. Mazur, asked a question. As of now, we do not have a partnership with the city of Lawrence, and the information concerning this project being financed out of our school referendum, Mr. Mazur, we've already spent that money. A guy over here by the name Roger Smith has already got the high schools about three-fourths done, so that is misinformation. If we're going to enter into any agreement with the city on the future project, that would have to come back before the Board of Education. So as of today, that is not the case. It would have to come here for approval. What this today will do is allow for us to get the proceeds so that we can move forward with a future design and a future bill, but if we're going to partner with any other entity, we'd have to go through some other legal step. Jeff is not here, his assistant would tell you that would require some hoops that we would have to go through if we were to arrive at that.
Thank you so much. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved, yeah.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Any further discussion? No further discussion, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. The approval of permission to transfer the funds to the rainy day fund.
Thank you, Madam President, Dr. Smith, members of the board. In front of you and presented earlier tonight, you have a recommendation to transfer $1.5 million of funds from our operations fund to our rainy day fund, so just want to make that point of clarification. It is from our operations. It does not affect those funds for stipends that we were talking about earlier, and at this time, I would ask the board to approve as submitted.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. Properly moved and seconded. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous approval. Now, Mr. Miles, on to the approval of the one-day loan of retirement fund bond.
Thank you, Madam President, Dr. Smith, members of the board. Once again, this is our recommendation to transfer that money for a one-day loan to get our debt service fund out of the negative balance and back into a positive per code, and at this time, I would ask that the board approve as submitted.
So moved. Second. Properly moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes, that's approved. I think it's to the approval of the resolution to transfer the funds to a sick day buyout fund.
That's correct, Madam President. Dr. Smith, members of the board, we've had several things, so thank you for your patience tonight. The last one here on our agenda is for a transfer of funds, once again, to fund that sick day buyout fund, which increased our payout for retirees from $50 to $100, and at this time, I ask that you approve it as submitted.
So moved.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes.
Madam President, I move that we treat action items 5.5 through 5.10 as consent agenda.
Do we have a second?
I second.
It's been properly moved and seconded to treat those items as a consent agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move approval of the consent --
Any opposed? None opposed, then we can move forward.
All right, I move approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Not opposed, that is approved. We're on to that having -- those all having been taken care of in the consent agenda, and I will just, you know, for the sake of the public, the items in our consent agenda are regular business items. They include board minutes, which are online and you can read, the approval of personnel reports, the approval of our claims, approval of service agreements, and the approval of pay apps and building projects payments, and the approval of field trips. I believe that's it. So those are online, you can see those online if you wish, but those are just our standard business items that we deal with every meeting. That having been accomplished, I want to thank this board. Thank you so much for a great meeting, for the work you're doing on committees, the work you're doing on the foundation, seeing you in various places this week, whether it be Harrison Hill for a little walkthrough, a Vex Robotics tournament, a basketball game. We're out there, ladies, and I want to thank you so much. So let's start with Ms. Dunn. Do you have any comments you'd like to make this evening?
I want to apologize for not being able to make the robotics competition, as I was actually very fortunate enough that the district sent me to the Indiana State Board of Associations onboarding conference, and just want to express my gratitude to Sheila and Superintendent Smith for allowing me to attend and learn and network with my colleagues. It was a wonderful experience and really appreciated that opportunity, and so just want to share my gratitude for that learning experience, and apologies for not being able to make the event, but yes.
I would say no apologies necessary. We all have actually regular 40-hour week jobs as well, so no apologies necessary.
But no, thank you, and thanks again for the warm welcome. Excited to have the first official meeting under my belt.
There you go. Ms. Lawrence?
Well, I don't know if -- I don't know how we normally onboard board members here, Madam President, Dr. Smith, but it is pretty special to be able to recognize your own son in your very first official board meeting for his musicianship, playing a trumpet, which many of you may or may not know you do, is my instrument. And I will tell you that, you know, I've been reflecting a lot this week on the extracurricular activities that our students get to be a part of here in Lawrence Township. Just this week, we were -- Ms. Norman and I were in Sandusky, Ohio for a robotics tournament, where we had, you know, a bunch of parents and staff spending a ton of time with our middle school Fall Creek Valley robotics team. We spent time this week with our elementary robotics team. My daughter was also on the robotics team. I should shout her out, too, because, you know. But I just want to say that it is in these sort of extracurricular activities that kids find their voice and find their passion, and we are exceptionally lucky to have a district that supports all students in a way that is not just singularly academic focus, but it allows them to -- way that is, that is not just singularly academic focused, but it allows them to develop and engage in their passions. And so, I just want to thank the board and, and the, the teachers that spend time out of their own lives to be there for our students in these extracurricular activities. Thank you.
Well said. Ms. Norman?
Yes, that was very well said, and be it on the record, Ms. Lawrence and I were in compliance, because there were only two of us.
Yeah, exactly, exactly right. We were like, we can't have anymore.
You might be able to plug in if you're going to the state championship.
We were officially doing our duty as chaperones, yes. But no, that was fun, that was a great time to spend together and spend with the kids, and I thank everyone in the district who made that happen. That was the first time I've ever seen middle schoolers fall asleep. It was like at 11:30 on a bus. So, yes, that was great. But we had talked a little bit about our legislative session that's going on right now, and I've received mail, I'm sure a lot of people out in the district have, from our local representatives and senators. Now's the time to reach out to them. It's very important that they hear from us. You can go to iga.in.gov backslash legislative, backslash find dash legislators, to verify who your state representative and senators are, and that way, we can rally behind our support for the public education, because right now, through, I believe, is it April, Dr. Smith, they will be working on the long budget writing session. Thank you.
Ms. Pocket?
That was just awesome, thank you. Get that, um, email again, or the website again. I would like to actually say thank you, well, thank you to everybody, like, especially to Mr. Miles, that was a lot of info, so thank you for that. But I want to thank Mr. Missouri as, as well, on just speaking tonight and bringing your questions to us, I thank you for just the engagement. We need that lens, and so I thank you for that. And I also want to thank those that probably aren't even able to listen now, or used to do what I did back in the day, because I worked evenings. Time is a form of equity, so for the parents that work in the evening, or, or have jobs, who have questions, we need community, we need each other to bring those questions that we may not always have that lens from. So, I thank you for asking, for being here and asking, but also for those parents that aren't able to be here, for them wanting to be present, or, yeah. So, I, that's all, that's it for me, that's it.
Well, thank you so much for, I have very little to add, very little at all, except to say that we're very lucky in Lawrence Township, that we are celebrating the 40th anniversary of our foundation. It was one of the first public school foundations in the state, and as with Vex Robotics and opportunities for college visits and field trips, and Up and Running, and so many more things, Bridge Fund, the foundation picks up where our taxes leave off. We do have issues with the complexity funding in our schools, and in order to have an equitable experience, to have a foundation that will pick up those costs for our students is an immeasurable gift. So, I would support that foundation wherever and whenever you can, even if it's just a quick day of volunteering. Thank you to the foundation. And with that, I turn this meeting over to Dr. Smith.
I'm going to be short, but, Madam President, I bring to you, Dr. Altmaier, we have something called our Stakeholder Academy, and we have a couple of our representatives on the Stakeholder Academy. Dana, would you have them stand up and introduce themselves to the board and I? They've listened to your lesson at their first meeting very well, they decided to come to a board meeting tonight, is that correct, Dana?
We have a high achieving stakeholder academy. And it is encouraged that all members of the Stakeholder Academy attend one Board of Education meeting, and we met for the first time last week, and here they are. So, Krista, if you would please stand up, and Mr. John Strass, if you would please stand up, these two join this interactive academy to learn more about the informed advocates in our local community and as the public.
All right. All right, appreciate you. Madam President, I'm going to keep my word short, because we, we're back in school, so we're going to be busy. Yes, it is coming on Wednesday, patrons, just listen to the news, Dr. Altmaier and I will communicate. Roger Smith, right over there, will call me early in the morning, we have you covered in communication, we'll go out, as we always do, as we watch the weather forecast, is that correct, Roger Smith? We got it, okay. Thank you, folks.
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
We're adjourned.